...business meeting of Foxfire Village Council. Let the record show that all council members are present. I'd like to open with a prayer.
Father, thank you today that we get the privilege to gather openly. Let us never, ever take that for granted. I ask that you would give the council wisdom to work through the issues, that we would have your heart. And we pray for western North Carolina tonight, or this afternoon. We pray for restoration for those who are responding. We ask you to give them the ability to, so hope where there's discouragement, to begin the restoration process. And for those who have lost, Father, I ask that the Holy Spirit would be their comforter, that somehow you as God Almighty will make all things work together for good for those who love you. And we speak peace into Florida. We speak to that hurricane and we declare it will not do great damage. We ask for your protection over that state and those who are in the swat of that storm. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to ask, are there any additions to the agenda?
Yes. Under, I just want to talk about park trails and...
That's on the agenda. For you, park trails?
No.
No.
No. I'm adding it. And something regarding our ordinances for the park trails. Oh, it's under everybody else. I'm sorry, that's under. Okay.
So, okay, you're adding just the park trails.
Oh.
How about those real quick?
Oh, yeah.
It's really more so. And then...
I have one too. Fire update, fire department update, they put that in the board, please, department.
And I am going to add an update on the fire contract.
That's under old business.
Oh, it is right there. No, that's, okay, that's budget and contract. Let's just add contract to that. Sorry. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Could I have a an approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Set it. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to public comments. And this is comments limited to items that are not on the agenda. So if anyone has any questions, concerns?
Well, Sally, come if I live at one Regro. I just want to bring up the pool. We haven't heard anything for like two months. And they did an assessment on the pool. And have we contacted them to see if they forgot us, whether we can come back with a report? I mean, it's just like forever. This pool season's over, you know? They should have time. And that's basically, we won't hear what's going on. Because once we get that, then it's going to take three months to do this, and then three months to do that, and three months to do that, and then we have another season of that pool. Because that's where we're at, I think. Because by the time you get three quotes, if you need to replace the pool, three quotes to fix the pool, and then they get the quotes to you, and then you have to get work going to look up, it's a whole nother year. So we're...
We're working on it.
Time is going, and we haven't heard anything from this company.
And we're working on it.
We're working on it.
Yes, we are.
Because they, doesn't seem like they've gotten that. Because we haven't...
We're working on it. We do have a lot of, we are working on information to be presented, but we wanted to...
Get it off.
We're basically working on our presentation for that.
Oh, that's more information than we had last month. Thank you.
I didn't catch all that, sorry.
Barbara Okula, for Fox Hill Circle. I couldn't hear everything you were just saying. I was also interested in an update on the pool.
We don't have, we don't have an update that's ready to be given. We don't have all the information. We are compiling information so that people can evaluate our options.
Are you compiling it from different people, or just one company? I mean, I don't understand.
We are, yes, from different people.
You have different companies?
Yes.
Bidding on the work?
We are doing our due diligence right now.
Hi, Rosie Juliano, to the true place. So I respectfully ask the village council members to consider a few requests. First being to provide public council meetings that are family-friendly and work-friendly in time by moving the meetings from 4:30 to possibly something like 6:00 PM. Neighboring communities such as Whispering Pines, Southern Pines, Pine Blood, Aberdeen, Carthage, and Taylor Town, schedule meetings anywhere from 6:00 to 6:30. Pinehurst is an exception, where meetings may run from 4:30 to as late as 8:30. In addition, to provide real-time video recordings, neighboring communities such as Whispering Pines, Southern Pines, Pine Blood, Aberdeen, Carthage, Pinehurst, and Taylor Town, work with live stream videos for residents on their website and on YouTube. A Foxfire resident currently records sessions voluntarily. I know that there was a cost analysis that was being done at some point in time. I believe it might have been mentioned in the LRP as well. Unfortunately, the LRP kind of rolls over and there really are now no updates that are provided to anyone in regard to where we are, what the cost analysis is. Provide substantive agendas and packets which relate to the agenda items. For example, the pool, if there was a little bit more information, individuals would have a better understanding of where we are at and what to expect, and when they might want to come to meetings to have additional discussion in regard to it, but they're basically left blind. Informative agendas would help to drive better meeting attendance, allow residents to make better choices on sessions that they would like to attend and those that they may not be interested in. Packets are provided by all of the towns that I had mentioned. And it also provides information to the, to the residents in regard to things that are being discussed by the council. Provide meeting minutes on the website on a timed basis. For those that can't attend meetings, minutes are the opportunity for them to catch up and find out what's happening within the village. No packets and delayed minutes translates to residents being kept in the dark and feeling that there's no transparency. So overall, I think what we want is, and what we're striving for, is transparency, accountability, effective communications between the council and between the residents. And I feel like that's lacking. I know that there have been a number of incidents which have occurred in the, in the village where individuals have been a bit more outspoken than they should have been, have done things that not most of us would do. And I would hope that the council recognizes that that kind of translates to there's something that's not quite right and something that maybe needs a deeper look to try and understand why residents are feeling the way they are. And those few individuals who are responding inappropriately are doing what they're doing. Again, I feel like the residents are just looking for information. They're looking to feel as if they are a partner with the council. And when they come to meetings like this and the response is, "We're working on it", it's, that's not an answer. If I were working. And in my past positions, if I said to my boss, "I'm working on it", I'd be fired. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? For items that are not on the agenda? Okay? Moving on, we will go to the county administrators report.
Activity in the report is from August 14th through today. Only two single-family residence applications were received and approved. Home on Richmond and one on Portland Circle. There were five zoning compliance issued for a home on Oak Hill, two on Woodland Circle, and two on Portland. Other permits issued were another swimming pool, three accessory structures, four fence, three temporary signs, and two propane tanks built above ground. I give you some year-to-date figures, the bottom. And also, there were two ordinance violation notices issued for non-compliant shaming fences. They were constructed without a permit. One of the property owners has removed the fence and submitted an application which was approved for a four-foot black iron fence. The second property owner has yet to remove the entire fence and has asked for an extension, which I've granted until October 15th. If it remains after that date, then civil penalties will apply. So, yeah.
Thank you. I have a question about Portland Circle. Are there, how many more lots are there to be built? Seems like they've built...
Pretty much built that, there's at least a couple.
Maybe.
I think they've... It's carrying a warrant. Yeah. I don't know.
How many?
There may be a couple that are still not built, built yet, but it's pretty much built down.
They haven't been cleared yet.
Well, I don't know about cleared.
I mean, there's only about four, like four or five lots available to build on.
Probably.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa? Moving on, we will go to our department reports. Finance, Councilman Gilroy?
Yep. You've all got your month's actuals for the end of September in your box.
Yes.
Okay, so you should be able to look at those. For as of 30 September, the cash balances in the general fund in the total capital trust account, you've got just under 2.5 million, Capital reserve has $1,435,638. $1,435,638 for a balance on hand of just under 3.8 million. In the water department, the total capital trust fund is $864,218, reserves at $175,000. Total balance on hand in that department, $1,253,000. We're going to do at the work session, we'll go through the first quarter budget, just so you're ready for that one paper lineup. Everybody looks like they're in pretty good shape. And then, we have talked with the county. There is a federal mandate to update radios for all the fire departments across the county. The feds mandated it and then didn't fund it. No one's very happy about that, but we will pay a portion of that. And we've already talked to the county. We will do our radio purchase through them, and once that's done, they'll send us an invoice for our portion. And that is it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mary? Moving on to streets and park.
Okay, so, well, I had gotten a call from Guardian Pine Tree Terrace and Village Hall entrance, got a call from the paver, and they were called out to the western part of the state. So that's why we did not do it last week, but it will be scheduled for next week, Tuesday and Wednesday. Pine Tree Terrace is going to be first, and then the Village Hall will be second. So that is scheduled.
You said Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday and Wednesday. Pine Tree is Tuesday. Village is Wednesday. And they, hopefully at that time, will also do the striking on north and south Shamrock.
Good work on that.
Okay. Regarding the park trails, just wanted to pass down some pictures that unfortunately, I think if everybody remembers, we had three, four or five areas that needed to be fixed. We did two, and hoping to hold off on the other three until the next budget period. Unfortunately, Mother Nature wasn't playing along with us. And this is what is on one of, the red trail has now become impassable at this point in this area.
Well, I think more than holding off to the next budget, I think we wanted to make sure that whatever the fix was, that it was...
The fixes took, and that was on the yellow trail.
That that was going to be
Yeah.
the right solution.
Yes, so those two areas on the yellow have held up. This area is on the red, and there's another area on the red that I didn't take pictures of. I spoke to Brad, and who is maintaining our trails and doing all the work. If we can, this, this has to be fixed. Because it leaves about this much area to walk past on that trail right now. If we just do that one area, it's going to be about 7,000. And if we do both areas, it'll be 10, and get them done. If we wait until next year, it's going to run us about the same price that it did this year, about $40,000.
Is, what's the fix?
Yeah, what's the...
The fix is the cement, like they've done on the yellow trail? Have they been done there?
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 it's really, really, it's really, really...
Yeah, so they're going to do that in these two areas too.
Now, are these the only two areas that are washing out?
Yeah, right now, yeah.
Consistently?
Yeah. So if we get those fixed, I mean, we're going to pay for all of this in today's dollars versus next year...
Yeah, I thought when he started, he gave us a quote of about 37, right?
37,5. No, that was for those two areas.
Those two areas.
Yeah. So if we can find the money to get it done, but that one area has to be fixed.
What's the cost of the temporary repair?
Oh, we're not doing temporary. Why, why pay for temporary? Because then you got to do it again and spend even more money. And what's the temporary repair? You fill in the hole, and then it does it again.
Yeah, the only other thing they can do is drag back, if there's something to drag back onto the trail.
Well, I think they should fix both of them now.
I recommend that.
The right way.
I mean, if I have the money in the budget...
We'll make money in the budget.
Yeah, that, that one area is very bad. And he was out there and looked at it last week. So he gave me the quote.
Okay, are there any other areas then that we're going to need to fix?
Well, and again, that's hard to say until Mother Nature takes over.
Well, but Mother Nature is a dent up there.
These are the areas that have consistently been problems. The other ones, they can pretty much fill in, and they're not as bad as this. But we knew about these two areas to begin with last year.
So they're in the report?
What?
Those two areas in the report.
So we need to make a decision if you want to make the decision tonight.
I'll make a motion that we fix them, both of them now, the right way.
And how much money is that?
He quoted about seven, oh, wait, timeout, let me grab my notes here. $10,000 to do both.
Did he give you a verbal quote or a written quote, or is it...
He's going to send me the...
All right.
That was a verbal.
I'd like to see it in writing.
And that's two...
I can get it in writing.
Yep.
And that's two, two locations?
Yeah. I told him I needed it today, but I didn't get it.
What's his timetable to do it?
He can, and I don't know what his schedule is, Mary, I can't answer that question right now. But within the next couple of weeks.
All right. And do we need to like block off the red so people don't go tripping down there, or is it blocked?
Well... These, this area is very obvious, but it's still, you know, all I need is somebody to kind of slip.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I can, we can block off this area, but then you can't get around. So we have a choice, block off the whole red trail loop, or...
Well, can't you just put cones around the washout? And then they can kind of see that they can't walk there? Because it is walking, you're not driving.
Correct.
So...
Correct.
You said there's about three feet?
That they can walk around it, yeah. But, so, yeah, we can do that. Yes.
Good.
Yeah, I can have somebody put on, or I can do it, put the cones out. Okay. Or maybe our illustrious, thank you, Derek. I'll show you where it is. Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Well, Don made a motion, and there's been no second on that motion.
No second.
So there's been a motion presented to invest $10,000 or thereabouts.
Yeah.
Pending, pending a written quote.
Okay, that's fine. I'll have it this, I'll have it this way.
Yeah, that's fine.
So getting the quote, we're okay? Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, none, any opposed, we'll allocate funds to do that.
Derek, can I see you after?
Yeah, we will need a budget amendment. Right, we'll have to...
Yeah, you'll have to do that at the work session.
Yeah.
That's all. Anybody have any questions?
No, thank you, Janet. That's a lot of work, and it's constant, you know? Just never ends.
Well, I'll tell you what, though, he did a really nice job.
He did a phenomenal job. And if you've not been out there, it is, they did a phenomenal job on the two, on the two parts that they did. It's really, really good.
They, they, he takes great pride in what he does, so...
Thank you. Any other questions for Councilman Nolan? No? Water department?
All right. Stage one, restrictions have lifted as of last week. Production numbers have returned to normal, seasonal norms. We got the elevated tank inspection, we do it annually. That was done this past week. Also, we made repairs to well number five piping. They replaced the meter in there, replaced a check valve. They also replaced the gate valve up there by the street on Richmond and Ridge.
Were those all budgeted repairs, or were they unexpected?
No, they're in the budget. That's all I have.
Is it, how long before we get the tank inspection back, the report back?
I can't, I don't know, I can't.
Okay.
I can't answer that.
Is that part of the contract?
Pardon?
The contract that we...
It's part of the contract. We have, it's a 10-year period, it's an annual contract each year.
So there's no charge, or there is, well, there's a charge for the contract.
We've already paid the maintenance fee for the year, so there's no invoice coming.
Oh.
Cool.
Right, it's a $28,000 payment per year for 10 years.
And that includes, inspecting, annual inspections also includes two extra years of paying and any change of payment.
Plus cleaning?
Cleaning.
Yes. Okay. Up next is public safety, Councilman Allison.
Okay, first of all, we have the update from the fire chief. Jeff, I sent on last night, I think, the report for the month, but basically 74 calls hold for the department, 24 of which were down here in Foxfire. Right now, we're on pace to do 1,086, up from about 1,000 last year. Only other really report is really our response to the hurricane. We did up staff personnel in preparation for local response. Once the hurricane hit and things in western part of the state went sideways, we did send a engine crew of four personnel, they left out on Sunday. They were up there for a week in Marion, and they assisted Marion Fire Department with running calls. And also, they actually backfilled the fire department, but also went out on search and rescue missions. During that week, they did about 100 calls of, like 911 type calls, in addition to cutting trees and doing home searches and things of that nature. At the same time, locally, we opened up the firehouse in West End as a drop-off point. We had incredible outpouring of support, I know you all had similar down here. We actually were able to connect, I went up on Saturday night, my daughter is in Boone, so I went up to take stuff to her and her friends. I ran into Susan Schuster, used to work here. We made a connection with Sugar Mountain and Banner Elk. And so our efforts were really to assist them in that region, Lynnville Grandfather, Beach Mountain, that Maine region. We collected over 20 pallets of water, and we sent up six 26-foot trailers of water, food, clothing, diapers, can openers, fuel, you name it, it went up there. So we had, you know, not only the donations, but people from the community coming to the firehouse to help package that up, as well as people coming with us to take those items up there. So it was a huge, huge effort, you know, really just an incredible effort. It did delay, this is fire prevention week, so we have, we put the sign out on the front there. We were supposed to do school fire prevention programs this week. With the hurricane, we kind of pushed that back a week. So we'll be doing the two elementary schools in our district this next week. And then we have multiple community events, trunk or treat, things of that nature. So that's my report.
I got a question. Would you explain what your firemen can do on these EMS?
Absolutely. So all of our full-time firefighters are certified firefighters, rescuers, and EMTs. So we, we chose many years ago, actually, we didn't really choose, we have always run all calls. When the county went to the flat fire tax throughout the county, one of the things that stuck out to us is Chairman Bracerno came out and spoke to the residents in Seven Lakes. He said that there would be no change in service to the citizens by going this route. So we have continued to run all calls. And what that means is it's stubbed toes anywhere up to cardiac arrest. I'll give an example, in September, we actually had a gentleman here in Foxfire that was in his attic, fell through the, or fell in the attic, and that was a technical rescue. That was a rope rescue. And basically, it sounds funny, we weren't at real high heights, but to lower him down safely, we put him on a backboard and rigged up a rope. So not only firefighters, but we're also technical rescuers as well as EMTs. Now, my volunteers and part-time guys, I have a combination of, you know, EMTs. I'm an EMT, I'm a volunteer. A lot of my part-time guys are EMTs. So we always make sure we have two EMTs on shift, because that's what the county contract says. But many times, we have multiple more than that. And then I know, Don, you and I had spoken, you know, in terms of, you know, personnel down here. Right now, we have a new firefighter that started with us a while ago, much like with the police department or anybody new. We need to get him acclimated to the area. He's not checked off the driver truck, so a lot of time is being spent to train him on driving the vehicles. And more importantly, really knowing the area, where to go. You know, and Foxcroft would be an example. You have Foxcroft and Foxcroft, so making sure you go to the correct addresses.
Now, what does your, when you say they're EMTs, exactly what do they, what can they do?
So...
Service-wise?
So if you look at EMS service, you have, you know, people like the police department that have basic, you know, medical care. They may be able to use an AED if they've been trained in CPR. Above that is what they call medical responder. It's a little bit more, it's putting, you know, Band-Aids on, direct pressure, elevation, things like that. Then when you get to EMT, it's a basic level. A lot of the county, the county has a paramedic level, but a lot of the second people on the truck may be EMTs. So we are trained, it's 230 hours of training. It's anything from, you know, splinting, identification of strokes, heart attack symptoms. We can assist the patient if they have nitro and aspirin and EpiPins. We carry all that as well, so we can, if they've got a prescription, but maybe it's not handy, we can help them in taking that. And basically, we are stabilizing the patient until an advanced level gets there, county paramedics. Um, also, there's what they call a King Airway, um, it's much like innovation, but it's done a little bit different. You don't take a laryngoscope and actually insert it, it blindly goes in, but the way that it goes in, it makes sure that it gets into the lungs so that when we're doing CPR, we're actually able to ventilate the patient. And then all of our trucks, with the exception, I think, of two, have AEDs on them, so we can do, you know, AED and begin CPR when, when EMS is on the way here.
So you, do you do IVs?
We do not do IVs, that would be an advanced scope. So, I mean, really, the only things we don't do is, is, uh, IVs, like I said, innovations, uh, but we do it at a different type of innovation, using a King Airway, uh, or another style of airway. Uh, but we basically begin patient care, get them ready for when EMS gets there.
And you can't, you can't push any meds?
We can give them epinephrine, we can give them aspirin, we can give them nitro, um, we can give them albuterol if they're having an asthma attack. So there are some meds that are what they call advanced scope EMS, uh, that we can do.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay, that should be it. Thank you. Uh, the next up would be our Police Chief.
How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Very good. We're good. Very good. Um, just want to kind of start off, um, we've been working with FPLA, put together a fall sa- uh, safety jamboree with them, that's kind of their idea, we're just kind of piggybacking with them, but essentially, the way we're going to kind of work it, where fire will be on scene as well, we're going to be doing the fingerprinting with the, the children of the community, we're going to do some safety talks as far as, uh, obviously child safety, because that's what's behind, local safety, again, we're locking our doors, so on, as well as driving safety, seat belts and things, speed limits, so on and so forth. Um, the only reason why I'm kind of going into the whole driving aspect of it is through our government highway safety program, we get points for that, which is, again, saves us money in the long run. So, um, but by doing that, um, like I said, FPLA has kind of reached out to us, say, hey, what can we do as far as all that? Um, we've put together some talking points, we're trying to get a good demonstration, we're going to have K2 rent a couple of dogs over, um, to do some, uh, demonstrations and whatnot of what they offer and are available, as well as to show the kids some fun things as well. Um, since the whole, uh, hurricane went on up in the mountains, uh, much like the fire department, we have actually started a drive as well, FPLA has helped out with that hugely, um, as well as the general store, as well, and the golf course, and citizens. Um, doing a donation drive for all those that are infected in all ways, again, food, supplies, clothing, uh, toiletries, various items, fuels and so on, um, we've had a great turnout as far as that. Again, RPD, Don was there a little while ago, about halfway full now of things. Uh, we have a lot, so we're actually, uh, got set up with one of our other citizens, we're, later in the week, we're going to take a, and do our big drop there. Where, what our plan is, we, we've been kind of sharing things, taking things to West End Fire, various churches around the area currently. This is going to be kind of our second push at the end of the week, and then at the Fall Safety Jamboree, we're doing this drive up until that point. And hopefully, what we have then, it'll be another push for us then at that point. But like I said, we're taking multiple trips, multiple loads, through different avenues and whatnot, we've got several citizens. Reach out, hey, I have a trailer, I have a box truck, whatever it may be to get it there. Um, again, good group of folks around here, and everybody's kind of reaching out to help everybody in time of need. Um, so again, a huge thank you, again, to FPLA, the general store, the golf course, and, uh, as well as our citizens. Um, let's see, back to our government highway safety stuff, so as, uh, the month closed out, um, September thirtieth, June of the year closed out. Um, we should be getting something here before long as far as our points accumulation, we're somewhere around fifteen-hundred points, which each point equals be about a dollar currently. Obviously, as we know, we've been kind of short this last year, you know, officers and so on, so our points have not been as high as they have been at times, but we're working towards that. Um, I'm hoping that we'll be able to roll our points over this year into next year, and if that be the case, then, um, hopefully, whatever we can use our points for, we can use various things, could be radars in cars, could be our intoxicators for the roadside, could be traffic safety cones, various things, whatever they put on the list, but if we're able to get some things this year, we're going to do that, if not, we're going to hopefully push out for another year to, again, to bank our points, get something better and better. Uh, let's see. All right, um. So, in conjunction with fire and everything, we have offered, uh, the state agencies, or excuse me, the mountain agencies, our personnel as well. Um, I'm still waiting to hear something back and see if they want anybody, um, two weeks ago, I was in class in the mountains during the time of all this. Um, and I've met a lot of the chiefs up there in the area. I've reached out to all of them, hey, don't want to sound there, if you guys need any bodies, you just let us know. What our plan is, we're going to go two by two. So again, two guys to go, two guys to stay, we'll work the shift, we'll cover town. Once they're back, if they need more, we'll rotate out. Um, again, with that going on sustain for so long, but at the same time, as I look at it like this, it's, God forbid, something like that were to happen here, I would just need anybody to help I can get at that one, in some form or fashion, so. We have extended out, not heard anything in return as far as they want anybody to come up there, I know a ton of agencies have been sending people, and I think it's kind of on as-called or as-needed basis. For the month, we've had eighty-one traffic stops, a hundred forty-eight citations written. Of that, um, we've written three DUI, or we've had three trunks off the streets to DUIs, um, as well as five-point-five grams of crack cocaine, a seasonal one traffic stop. So like I said, it's coming through, we're doing everything in our power to go ahead and get it out of here, and Lord willing, that's what we're going to continue to do. Next point is, again, back to our drunk drivers and everything, some of that there goes to our government highway safety stuff as well. If there's a campaign going on, say, for example, it's a booze and smooze campaign, you know, we write a DUI, well, we get a few extra points, shovel our way, so. Again, we take what we can get, and we will continue to press on. Um, kind of brings me to one of our last points, um, I don't know what you guys know about the LESSO program also, this is the ten thirty-three program, it's something we're working with currently, it's a way for us to get pretty much free equipment. Um, we've done it in years past, when I say we, I mean, the police department. We've done it years past and got some weapons from years back, um, since then, we've upgraded some of our stuff, but nonetheless, it's, that's a zero-cost option for us, we've got weapons and ammo and things of the sort. Obviously, it saves us money, it saves town money, and that's the bigger picture there. Um, currently, I'm working on to get us six new computers for our patrol cars. It'd be a, to a little to no cost option for us. Um, currently, one of the computers runs about sixteen-hundred dollars a piece. I've actually put in a requisition, we could have six of them issued to us, savings of about ninety-six-hundred dollars. Um, like I said, they may, I mean, and to get a lot of the stuff is brand-new, I don't know what you guys know about the government contracts, but they'll put out a contract, hey, they might need five computers, but they said they have to write five hundred. Well, that's four-hundred-and-ninety-five computers just sitting around. So a lot of this stuff, like, I actually went in and looked at them earlier, brand-new, and I was scratching where I'm, they just don't have a hard drive in them because they might have some sort of special file that the military uses. So again, minimal costs and so on, but, like I said, if we're able to get our hands on some of that stuff, that's what I want to do, but again, to upgrade some of our stuff, because our computers now are a few years old, we actually have one that the screen is about cracked on, it's unresponsive, so. Spend a hundred dollars on getting the screen repaired, or spend a hundred dollars to get a, a hard drive to a brand-new one.
Brand-new one.
So, is that surplus military, is that what you said it was?
Yes, yes. And, I mean, there's various things on there, I mean, some of the stuff is like, uh, AEDs, um, they have the portable AEDs, or the ones that you put on the walls and so on. Yeah, we can write and get things like that, and I know, me and Janet, we spoke a while back about ADD at school. I don't know if that's come through yet or not, if you want to hear it, but that's something else I've put on our agenda, just see if we all.
I thought you were going to check on that, Don.
I, I mean, again, I have checked, but again, they're, they're high-dollar options, and, I mean, obviously, we have to add it, we have to add it, but we can get free.
You went by, you went by the message of free ammo.
Yes, yes, and, and I'll bring you to another point, um, free ammunition, so the way it's written is, so for example, we're, we're designated six officers currently, for full-time to reserve, which, by the way, our reserve has been working. It actually worked this past weekend, or, was it this past weekend, Derek? Okay, sorry. Nonetheless, it worked this past weekend, you're going to work for eight or ten hours on Sunday, so, you know.
We need one of those machines for the village home.
Yes, and, and like, that's what I'm saying, I mean, again, so, the way we can write, we have, so we're allotted six of them, for example. So, because again, we have six officers, so, again, I can write for six AEDs, well, that's four cars.
Yeah.
One pool, one here, one PD, one here, one where, again, low-cost options for us. Um, the ammunition, so each one of us are, uh, supplied with two firearms, we have a long gun, as well as our sidearm. We can write, I have two-hundred rounds per weapon, per officer. So again.
That's it? At all times, or?
No, so the way it works is, for example, when I can write, say, hey, they'll give us any year's timeframe. I can get two-hundred rounds for my firearm, for my sidearm, as well as my long gun, same for Derek, so on, so on. So again, it's twelve-hundred rounds for a six, but again, we can't use it on duty, because again, it's training ammunition. But when we have our range days, instead of going out and spending several hundred dollars on, you know, ammo for all of us to be arranged, it's free at that rate. So, like I said, there's various things, they have vehicles on their weapons, um, so on and so forth, so we're trying to see what we can get into with that. Obviously, we don't want to get a.
What was the name of the program?
LESSO, or ten thirty-three.
L-E.
ESO.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, like I said, and that's something throughout the state, um, like I went over, they, they have a huge warehouse, all kind of generators, all that.
It's here, where is it located?
It's in Fayetteville, the corporate, yes, and so, um, but yeah, like I said, so we have that, that avenue, we're trying to look into our options as far as what's best for us, you know, to be able to obviously save us money to get us the equipment we need. So again, whenever we talk about the AEDs, you know, we're looking at a thousand, two thousand dollars a piece, well, this rare is free. We get six of them, that saves us six thousand dollars. So, we have these different options and so on, so, um, like I said, we're trying to get there, but it just takes a little time. Most of the time, we put in requisitions about two or three weeks before we can actually get our hands on something. Like I said, so currently, it's kind of a little working, but.
Got a question, somebody said you volunteered for the K9 to be the target?
I, I did not, I told, I told my name to Don Nelson.
Not big enough, too small.
No, that's all come by me. Very good, thank you.
Uh, just a reminder on the, uh, Fall Safety, uh, Jamboree, that that's October twentieth, one to four o'clock.
At the Village Green.
At the Village Green Park. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. I guess it's up to me, okay? Okay, um, first thing I want to go over is, um, recently, we started, the, the mayors of Moore County started a group meeting, so once a month, or actually, once a quarter, we get together, all of the mayors and village managers of all the towns in Moore County. Um, and we found that, um, we have a lot more in common than we, than we have that separates us. And we've learned a lot about other things that people are doing, so it's been, it's been working quite well. And we've also found that our lobbying power with the, um, state government is a little bit stronger when we're all on the same page. So the biggest, probably the biggest, um, things that we talked about in our last, in our last meeting, number one was that they're very confident across all these mayors that they're going to try to take away our ETJs again, um, for the state, not even just Moore County, but the entire state. Um, they tried it once before, it didn't pass, they tried to do it in Moore County, and that kind of got sidelined. There's a lot of, of counties in this state, most of them are on the, on the western side of the state, in the mountains and on the coast, that don't have ETJs, and from what, um, people who live there have said, and these mayors know people who live there, that it's just not a good thing. It's, everything is just a hodgepodge, and there's no, there's no compatibility between pieces of land, and it's, it's just not, it's not a good look, and it hasn't worked well in a lot of places where, where it's been implemented. What they, what, um, what they did is they constructed a letter, and they wanted all the mayors to sign on to the letter that is going to begin as Neil Jackson, John Salz, and Ben Moss. And it's just basically voicing that we all, all of us that have ETJs, uh, really, as far as we know, our landowners, our residents, that are in the ETJs are happy to be there. And I think that, I think developers are influencing our, um, our politicians of, more than our, than more than our residents. So, um, this is the letter that was drawn up, and it's, it's, I think it's a, it's a pretty good letter, it's basically saying how we're, we as a group, um, it's, we think that it's a very bad idea to eliminate the ETJs. And it says here that, you know, we've been pretty responsible, all the towns in the counties have been responsible in the development of the ETJ. And again, the decisions that are made now can lead to permanent alterations in the landscape and quality and the life of the people in Moore County, and that's true, because if, if the, if the county, if everything becomes under county's own, developers are going to run right through and do whatever they want, and these developers don't live here. They, they don't, they probably don't even, they don't live in Moore County, some of them probably don't even live in North Carolina, or if they do, they live in very exclusive areas, so they come in, do what they want, and then they leave. And they, they're also stating here that each town within Moore County maintains its own identity and contributes to the county's desirable qualities as a whole. Limiting the town's authority of extraterritorial lands and leaving the county to govern where growth and development will exist is unnecessary and an overreach of power. And this will render smaller communities within the county helpless to the impact of unbridled residential and commercial development. And, you know, especially towns rural, small rural towns, you know, if you're Southern Pines, you're, you're built out all over the place, and Pinehurst, you know, they're, they have very few developable properties, um, now, but you know, there's a lot of towns, Cameron and Whispering Pines, Pine Bluff, they have a lot of open land.
Us.
Yeah.
You got a ton.
And that, we just, you know, we, um, we could be decimated by, by losing that control. And I don't think anyone here wants to see that, so anyway, that's basically what this letter is saying. And I wanted to bring it to the council, because I, I'm not going to sign it, obviously, unless the council approves of the document.
I got a question, there's four names on here, which one of these four names are all, that proposed this bill to go through?
Uh, I believe it was, well, McGinnis, McGinnis, and I believe Jackson named Foxfire as one of the main reasons for.
I don't know about Gavin.
Salz, I don't know, he's a Southern Pines guy, Ben Moss was not totally against it.
I'm changed for this group.
Ben Moss, and he's, I believe, um, he lives in an ETJ, but, but he represents, um, I don't know what part of the county, but. Yeah, right, I know, I know. I believe John Salz is, is more of a, in the Southern Pines area. But anyway, um, so I guess if the, the council is approving of it, I will.
I'll make a motion that you sign the letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. I will, I will do that. The other thing that was brought up at the meeting, and I'm going to be looking into this, is, um, everyone was raving about, it's called Withers and Ravenel Engineering, they're in Raleigh and they're in Southern Pines. And these, these, it's, it's an engineering firm, consulting firm, but they, um, they've helped many of the towns around here with, um, stormwater, um, water and storage utilities, landslide development, um. So anyway, it's, it's, uh, I think something that, um, would be very helpful to us, designing, planning.
What's their name, Withers or what?
Withers and, and Ravenel. They're in Raleigh and they have an office right in Southern Pines.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Yeah, here it is.
And I believe numerous, I believe, of course, Southern Pines uses them, and Pinehurst, but as far as, especially stormwater and water control, I think would be extremely helpful. So, that was one thing that came out of that, other than, um, I guess the other thing would be, oh. Other than, I guess the other thing would be, oh, the other thing that we were talking about is short-term rentals. And the new laws that were passed in the past couple, or the past year, state laws, allow us to regulate it through zoning districts. And I think that's something that we would like to take a look at again because our short-term rental ordinances in zoning was written, I think, prior to this last round of legislation.
Yep.
And I think we need to take a look at that again and see if we can strengthen or clarify some of our short-term rental language and make it enforceable if, if we need to do so.
Are you going to give that to planning zoning to do?
Yeah, we have a work session on Friday.
Yeah.
And that's going to be, I have, I have Pinehurst's ordinances in zoning. And then they can look at the 160D that regulates that. And I think we, we can make some improvements to the language on our, our zoning. Not necessarily to restrict it, but I think just to have a better control over it. Because that's something that can take over a community very quickly, too. And I think we don't want to have to turn into the fight that Pinehurst has gotten themselves into with short-term rentals, kind of running over their single-family neighborhoods. Really made a huge difference to some of those beautiful neighborhoods. So that's that. So that's the update on the mayor's, they're still trying to figure out what to call the group, but it's the Moore County Mayors Group. And it's, it's great because we, we've made a lot of connections, and that's been helpful. And I guess I was going to do a hurricane relief update, but everyone kind of did that. And everyone's been very, very generous, for sure. Every time I go near the police department, there's more stuff, either outside or inside. So that's great. Any questions for me?
No.
Okay, moving on to new business. I guess we have a village code ordinance for park rules?
Yep.
And this is just for the work session, if we can talk about it. I'd like to discuss putting the park rules, at least the ones I've listed there, as part of the village code. And that way, the rules are enforceable because they would be part of the ordinances. And if anybody wants, these are basically the rules that we have out there.
This is for the work session, right?
So if we can talk about that. I won't be at the next work session, but if it makes sense. Okay. All right. Filling of personal swimming pools. I guess I'll talk about that. I know you have, you have a document, too, and I don't want to get into the weeds on this tonight. It's another item that I think that we are not going to, we're not going to agree on immediately. I, I personally think that we should not allow swimming, filling of empty swimming pools with town water. I think it should be made something that people need to purchase their water from a swimming pool distributor, water distributor. You know, we're all trying to conserve our water. We're all, we, we should, it should be a valuable resource to us, and there are other means of, of filling pools. And I think that that should be, that should be in our ordinances as well, and part of the rules, with possible fines attached. Because you're talking easily 20,000 gallons plus for a general backyard pool, and we do have a lot of pools. Now, that's not keeping the pools up to level. I'm talking about filling them from empty. Yeah.
You're talking about a new pool that somebody fills.
Yes.
Yes.
And I know Warren has got, he's got a very, very well-thought-out document that, you know, we just received about having people fill it using our water, but following very strict timelines and procedures and processes. And I just think it's going to be tough to enforce that and tough to, I don't think the honor system is necessarily the best way to administer that. But anyway, this is something that we need to do, and I think we need to do it sooner rather than later. Because a lot of people do have pools, and I think there's a lot of pool permits out there, correct? How many do we have active now? Do you have any idea?
Well, active, I don't...
It seems like you always have been...
Yeah, well, we just had one this past year.
Yeah.
That's for a new one, though, right?
Right. I'm not sure how many I could hear to date are filled around.
Right.
You have eight here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So those were new pool permits, right? So are those filled up?
I don't know.
And were they filled up during our restrictions?
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, I think it's something that we really do need to, we need to put a policy in place. And if it's not followed, I think, to the extent allowable, like law, we should be fining people for not following the rules, if it's possible. Because it's, it's, it's a valuable resource, and we ask people to make a lot of sacrifices for our water. So I think we need to be responsible about that.
And all I have to say is, I do hope council members read through the guidelines I've set up and deal more with the cooperation with, with our residents. But take a look at it, read through it. The water department gains a lot of benefit through cooperation with the residents. And that's, and we further discuss that on work sessions.
I think if we can monitor it and control it, it can work. But I don't know how that's possible. But if we can figure that out, I think it would be worthwhile. Next item is storage of non-village property on village property. I know that in the past, people have been storing, like different groups have been storing things at like the pool house and at the park, at the park facilities. And I know we've eliminated storage of non-village property at the pool, correct? But is that, is that still going on at the park where things are being stored? Now, I just don't think that's personally a good idea, that non-village property is being stored in our facilities.
What kind of stuff is being stored at the park?
Well, the FPOA.
You know, and, and I understand what you're saying, and I hear what you're saying. But, I mean, at the, at the pool, I think it's going to be a different situation because we've now gotten camera equipment in there. Depending on, you know, what happens with the pool, we may have to move the chemicals out of the pump house. So I, there's no way at this point, as we're thinking through things, that there would be any storage room at, for outside property, for residents' properties.
What's being stored there now?
Nothing. Where, at the pool? All the equipment, all the chairs and everything. We only have...
No, I mean...
No, no, there's nothing now. But on the other hand, and I'm going to use the park, for instance, for right now, at this point, I don't need that back end of storage that the FPOA uses right now. I don't need it. I think at some point, if we do need it, that might be a different story. And I understand what you're saying. But for now, at least in my opinion, I don't need the storage area. They use it, it's just, it's a small area that they keep all their supplies for their parties and things like that. My opinion is, is that we allow it for now, unless at some point, we need that area.
What, what is there?
They have some bins in there. They have some containers for their beverages, the cold beverages that they put ice in. They've, they've got...
Tables.
Tables.
Tents.
Tank, what?
Tents.
Tents, yeah.
Decorations.
So it's not, they're not using the main area where all of our camera equipment is. The, so it's not there. They've cleaned all of that out. So they just have that little storage area.
And that's just stuff that's used to support events at the park. It means that we take it, however you got to store it someplace else.
It's not insured if anything happens to it.
No, it's not.
But that's the thing that's, that's concerning.
And I think that's something that they have to deal with if something does happen. But at this point, I mean, my opinion is, we allow them to keep what they have in there at this point. Unless it's somewhere down the line, we need it for whatever the case may be. But for right now, there's no reason to ask them to move all that. At least from what I've seen, and it's kept very clean, they went and cleaned it out. But that's just my opinion. I'm, I'm one of five, so.
Well, I'm just bringing it up because it's, again, it's, they're storing non-village property in our, in our buildings. We're not responsible for it.
We're not responsible.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that...
And they know that. And they know that. I mean, again, if something happens to it, they know that. But again, I'm, I'm one of five, so.
It's been going that way for the last 10 years. I would, I put the dividing door in that, in that room for that purpose. FPOA is here, and the building stuff is behind. They can't get back.
And it was pretty cluttered for a while, but it did get cleaned out, so. It has not been a problem. It's very open in the area that we need. So I, I for one say, they can keep it in there.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. Then that's settled? Good. So we don't have to talk about that anymore?
No, but like I said, I just want to leave it open, though. If we ever do need that room, they know they'll have to take it out.
Well, and I think that's something that most people have to understand in general with this, with this village, is that things have changed so much over the past years that agreements that could have been in place years ago have no relevance or are becoming impractical as, as we move forward. And I think, you know...
Well, that's one of the reasons I want to get the rules and the ordinances because rules can be changed. I mean, right now, the park is open dawn to dusk, unless you have rented the park to be open, say, until 9:00. You know, and it used to be in the old days, you could probably say, yeah, you can stay a little longer. No big deal, no houses, no nothing. Well, we've grown to the point where we can't keep doing that. We have to be consistent with the rules at the park for everybody. I mean, if we're going to say to one group, you can stay until 9:00, and then say to another group, you can't, what's the reason?
We can't do that.
And that's why, you know, we've got to be consistent. And I like it in the ordinances, so that somewhere down the line, someone doesn't come and say, hey, let's change all the rules.
Right.
So that's why we are growing. We can't, we're not a little town anymore.
I know. We are little, but we're not, we're not 300 people anymore. 1444.
Yeah.
Okay. Last item on the, on this agenda here is the West End Fire Department budget.
No, new water.
The new vehicle, I'm sorry. Yes, I just wanted, excuse me.
Please.
Can we have order in the room, please? Thank you. Yes, I think we've made the decision that we really need to move forward with a new water, uh, vehicle for the water department. I just wanted to throw that out there and have the council either agree here, disagree, that it's time...
It's a budgeted item. It's budgeted, 24,000, 5,000 dollars.
Right, but we may, we may need, we may want to go with a new, with a new vehicle. So we may need more, but...
You got any estimates on a new one?
No, we haven't. I was, I was throwing out the idea of a transit, you know, one of those transit vehicles that is enclosed, and I don't think Jesse or Warren was opposed to that.
No.
So I think we're going to... Or the, what?
Ford Ansem, the nice transits.
Yeah, so we're going to start working on that.
Why are we looking at a new vehicle instead of a used vehicle?
Mostly for warranty.
You can buy an extended warranty.
Well, I think it, well, I think everything is on the table.
Yeah, okay. Because we look at 24,000.
Because a lot of the state contract Lisa was saying.
If you go through state contract, they have new vehicles. It's like, just like when you do the police car, you get a bare-boned one where you have it a lot cheaper than getting a used vehicle.
And plus, a lot of those have a lot of high mileage, too. And we don't necessarily, and if we do buy it, I mean, I know Jesse doesn't, he's pretty local. He doesn't, he's not going to rat him out at 10 miles. But I think it's time for us to start looking for a new water vehicle, whether it's a brand-new one or a great used one. I don't think those are off the table. But I think that's...
How many miles does Jesse run a year?
I don't know.
We need, we need to find that out because, and, and maybe, I'm not big on new cars. I always buy them two or three years old, but he's not running that many miles. So I mean, to look, to look at used ones is not a bad idea.
No, I think for, for me, personally, I think it's mostly just the warranty and what kind of life the vehicle had prior. Because these, these vehicles typically will be driven by...
Companies.
Yeah. Service workers. So I think it's, I think we need to keep an open mind on that. Okay, so that's that. I'm going to wait for Norman to come back to finish. Actually, I do have a question on the new vehicles. May I ask a question of our chief mosquito? I have a quick question for you. You, you can get police cars through certain...
State contract.
Now, is that, do they do all vehicles or just police cars?
There's certain ones on the list, but a lot of times, we can still get a various vehicle of whatever choice out on a state contract place. I was going to get them from Morgan at the end of it, to kind of touch base with them. We've made a few contacts over the years, and we may be able to find something that suits his fancy or Jesse's need or not, and have a decent price. And I'd be more than happy to sit down with him and just figure out what's the best option to kind of alleviate some of the, the burden and stress of everybody else because I know it can be a bit of a pain in the knees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add to that? We're looking at a vehicle, and we are pricing state contract and off the lot. Sometimes off the lot with some of the incentives right now, off the lot is better.
Yeah. I have someone looking off the lot. So we can compare. Okay, last one. Now moving on to old business, is our budget and our contract with West End Fire. We technically have not signed a, a new budget for West End Fire. We're trying to control the costs of the 300,000 that that was costing us, which is basically a third of our tax dollar is going to, a third of our tax rate is going to the West End Fire Department, based on the proposed budget. There are ways, I believe, that we can reduce this, but we need to, we need to come to a, a decision with our fire chief. And we've, we've been working with the county as well. There is a proposal that was presented to us, not by the fire department, but there is a, a conversation we can have about perhaps not being 24/7 at this fire station for service. We could significantly reduce the cost. The county is funding six hours of service at this fire department. If we went to 12 hours of service, well, paying for 12 hours of service extra, which would give us 18 hours, it would give, it would be 91,000, basically 92,000 dollars for that contract. If we went to an extra six hours, which would be 12 hours of service, it's 45,000, half of that. Now, if we do reduce the service, it would bring us down to about 250,000 dollars of, of what the contract would be.
That would be for 18, right? Us buying an additional 12?
Additional 12 is 92,000 dollars.
Okay, which puts us right at 250.
Right, 250. Right. So I guess my, my, my question to the council is, is do we want to entertain reducing the number of hours for coverage?
No.
We do have... We do have.
No, no, you can't die between twelve and six.
Can we have order in the room, please? So, we do, we do have EMS service by EMS coming out of Seven Lakes.
Which takes about, what, eight minutes to get here?
Right. Now, as we know, our.
What?
Average is twelve.
Twelve.
From Seven Lakes.
Okay.
If you're there.
Okay.
Now, as we know, our fire department is not EMS, they're, I'm sorry, they are not paramedics, so we do know that. We do have police that respond to all of our safety calls with, um, you know, basic, basic, um, first aid, CPR.
I phone in and I can't get up?
Right, assist calls, right. So, I guess my, I guess I just wanna throw it out there, and a lot of times, our police are showing up at these calls prior to the fire department, um, so, and I'm not saying it's, you know, obviously, we're not talking fifteen, twenty minutes, we're usually, you're looking at, when you call for an EMS, for a, an assist call, usually someone is showing up within four or five minutes, I assume. Is that correct?
Michael?
Michael?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So, and then whatever emergency care that's needed other than basic first aid is coming with EMS out of Seven Lakes, which I think is the closest other than First Health.
Well, I'd kinda like to know when most of our EMS calls are happening.
Everybody needs the sheet, and I'm not sure, is this the one, this is the one we just looked at, right?
I didn't get that.
I really need copies of everything.
Seventy-two percent, we got the same one.
Seven.
Yeah. Can we make copies of this, and you can't, it, it, people, you need to be able to see what, what the calls look like.
Yeah, well, it, this is a work session discussion, right?
Well, it is and it isn't, because the contract, we do need to sign a contract. I mean, we, we, I'm not gonna make this decision, we, I don't think we need to make a final decision. I guess the question is, is do we want to reduce our costs for fire service? Or do we wanna raise taxes? Because those are our two options, so.
So, for the eighteen hours, it was two fifty, and for twenty-four hours, it was three hundred and five.
That's this year, it's.
Do we get to dictate the eighteen hours when that would happen?
I would assume it would be, we would, I would assume. Cause we're paying for the service, so I would assume.
Well, that's why I'd like to see when most of the calls are, do you know what I'm saying? The emergency calls are happening.
Janet, just give me that sheet back when you're done.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I'm opposed to this whole idea. First of all, we need the fireplace, uh, the, uh, fire people out on the job on these, uh, nine-one-one calls, or mostly because of medical, because they're a lot more well-trained than our police officers. They're not trained where those police, uh, fire people are. They can really help out a person, they have a heart attack, they can give CPR, nitro, they can do all of that. Police can't do that. And if we don't have a, a, a station operating right in here twenty-four seven, the response time goes from seven minutes to fourteen, fifteen minutes. I would never, I would never agree to eliminating hours in this, uh, fire station, never. I'm not gonna go out and say, if it passes the other way, and all of a sudden, people are being upgraded, our older people are gonna be upgraded, they want that service. And we got, right now, we got, we had, we passed a contract, the council passed that contract, but it never got submitted to West End Fire.
Oh, yes it did. Yes it did.
Did you get a copy of that contract?
He changed it.
Oh, you changed it, yeah.
No, he changed it.
Oh, he changed it, okay.
Yes, that's why it has not been signed, because we did present it, and it was, it was changed and not acceptable.
So, is the three hundred thousand still a good number?
Not, not right now, no. No.
Well, that's my point, so that's, that's what I'm saying.
When was this generated? Is this year-to-date as of, today?
Yep.
This month?
Yep, yesterday, yep.
Okay, can you always make sure Lisa gets copies of these, please?
If people want copies, things provided, I have to have them given to me to be able to disperse, so. Really, really, what did I get?
What we, what we need, what we need to do is we need to understand that this is going to result, there's really no way around this, cause based on the, just so we know, that based on the county funding, what, based on what the county funds and what was left over, the twenty-four percent was a hundred and fifty-nine, basically a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that was basically Foxfire's portion of the fire expense.
And that includes six hours a day at this station.
That includes six hours a day at this station. Now, there's a big cry between, there's a big difference between a hundred and fif, a hundred and sixty thousand and the three hundred thousand that the fire department, three hundred and five thousand plus that the fire department wanted from us, and that's what I'm trying to square. So, again, we're looking at paying the.
Well, the county recommended rate is eight point seven five.
No, 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 that's.
That's their rate, right?
It's the rate for the county based on the amount of money, it's just like our tax rate. It's just like our tax rate, you back into your mill rate or your tax rate based on the dollar amount of your budget. That's how you do it. You don't tax people on a, on a rate and take all the money and spend it, it doesn't work that way. So, that's what I'm just trying to, I'm trying to make sure people understand that if we continue with the twenty-four seven, I'm not saying we're not gonna do it, I'm just saying if we do it, we will be increasing taxes, and that's a guarantee, and I just want people to understand that. And it's for, it's for twenty-four seven coverage, but if someone needs ambulance assistance, the fire department is not gonna do it. You have to wait for EMT.
That's not true.
Do you have an ambulance?
We respond as a first responder and then assist EMS upon their arrival. So, if you're having a heart attack, you're having an issue, we get there on average seven to twelve minutes prior to EMS.
No, I just said you're not gonna transport to the hospital. I just want people to understand that, that the fire department is not transporting to the hospital.
Cause you don't have an EMS.
No, we are a base, we are an EMT level non-transport service, so we are a first responder. So, what I would say is, the six hours, you all may propose it, I doubt that the fire department will accept it. So, I mean, we, we can't hire people and staff just, and we've been providing the service at the same level for the last ten years at least, and for three months without guarantee that we're gonna get any money to cover the cost of that, and our costs have gone up substantially, just like everybody else's, with regards to labor, equipment, and personnel, and apparatus costs. And so, the request that we have is, in, in the eight point seven five that the county is funding, is only the operational costs, it does not include the building and the apparatus. Your pricing includes the building and apparatus.
Okay, but wait a minute, the letters we have say we're not responsible for your debt service.
That's right.
That's not true.
Yes, it does.
As I talked to Wayne Best last week, he said basically, you are responsible for twenty-five percent of the overall cost of operating West End Fire Department.
Right, but we have letters that say we're not, we are not financially responsible for apparatus purchases, because we have no, we really have no say in those, Eric.
You're talking about the letters for the loans that I have on Foxfire? That is for that loan, you're not responsible for us, not the loan, that's not the loan.
No, no, that's not what that says, it says we are not financially responsible, that's what that says. So, it's the fact that we don't have a contract at the moment, what we do have is our old contract, and that is in effect until a new contract is signed.
We have given you notice.
No.
Yes, we have, I emailed Don back on March eighteenth stating that we wanted to negotiate a new rate, and that was our notice given ninety days prior to the end of the existing term.
Do you have that?
I'll have to go back and check it out.
But if it doesn't say that you were terminating the contract, it is still in effect, cause the contract is in effect until it's terminated.
It wasn't written, I thought it was.
Then I will put you on notice that you have not made your quarterly payment, and thus, you all have violated the contract, cause the quarterly payment was due at the end of September, it is now October eighth.
That payment will be made based on the contract that we have in place.
Personnel will be pulled out of the station this evening.
But the contract states that you're gonna give us twenty-four seven coverage at the rate that we set, which, that's, and that's what we will do.
I've been directed by my board of directors that if you do not agree to the contract that was presented to you at the three oh five number that affected this evening, we will pull the staffing.
It wasn't the three oh five number that was presented to us. What, no, we presented you with a contract, and that contract was that we would pay you three hundred and five in four equal statements and four equal payments. You came back and said that's not what you wanted, that you wanted tax, you wanted eight seven five of our tax base. That's different, that's different. We sent you a contract and you did not sign it, you did not agree to it.
We, we actually sent you our version because we had not received, and after multiple attempts, the board directed me to rewrite it and send it back to you.
We sent it to you, we sent it to you.
I sent you a contract, Eric.
You sent out, I mean, basically, the answer that the fire department's gonna give is that for the last ten years, we have had an ad valorem tax rate, that is what we agreed, when we met.
But that's not what we agreed to.
That's, that's fine.
And we said we would pay you three hundred and five thousand dollars in four payments, and that, you said that was not good enough.
Well.
That's what you said, you said that you wanted eight seven five of our tax base, which we said is not, it is not feasible for us to say, you're gonna get eight seven five of all of our tax dollars, point eight seven five, when there's no bottom line to the budget.
But for the last ten years, every year, we have followed the same ad valorem rate numbers.
Right, but the county is.
The county doesn't fund that way now.
Right.
The county has nothing to do with the contract between us. It is a contract between a nonprofit and a municipal fire department. The county has a guideline, a framework, the fire commission is a framework, and how the county funds the fire department.
And so, what you're saying right now, and I just wanna make sure I understand that, we sent you a contract saying we will pay you three hundred and five thousand dollars for this service in four equal payments, quarterly.
Yeah, you turned it down, you turned it down, you came back with a, with rate of point zero zero nine two three or something like that, which would have added more dollars.
We didn't agree, basically, when Don and Mary and I spoke, and our board president spoke, prior to you accepting or approving your budget, we agreed to a rate plus a dollar amount that came up to three hundred and five. When we did that, that is what our expectation in good faith was with what the, how you would write your contract.
Let me tell you one thing, is, is that this council works as a group, and the council decided that we were gonna give you three hundred and five thousand, so you didn't answer that question, you're telling me that three hundred and five thousand dollars in four equal payments is not sufficient for us to secure fire service from you?
That is not the way that.
It, it, yes or no?
That is the dollar.
Yes or no?
Excuse me, ma'am, the dollar amount that we requested was three oh five.
And we said we would give you three oh five and, and.
And, and the way that it has been done for ten years was based off the ad valorem, so that is how, it was our understanding and what we negotiated, understanding that the council had to approve the full amount, or approve whatever funding you were gonna do. We knew in talking to Don and Mary that they did not have the authority to act as the whole, but that they were acting as a voice and, in general premise, what those numbers would be. The only thing that we changed from the three oh five is the mill, getting the mill rate to get to that three oh five.
No, no, not at all. The three oh five, again, we are not, for you to say that, and again, just answer the question, you're saying that three hundred and five thousand dollars in four equal payments is not sufficient for us to secure fire service from you?
That's not what I'm saying.
Well, then.
What I'm saying is that in the past, the way that the fire department has done things, because as you grow, we grow, as you grow, we grow, call volumes go up, you added a, a community with twenty or thirty homes, our call volumes could go up, we need to make sure that we are on the path to fund the, that growth.
You, you fund your growth through your budget, and then we meet your budget, but it's not through, it's, you tell us what your budget is, and you, and you said your budget was three hundred and five.
It was actually three twenty-nine, we negotiated down to three zero five.
Right, okay, well, three zero five.
That's what we agreed to.
And that's what we agreed to, and you declined that, so that's why we are where we are.
Is the three oh five a good number today?
Yes.
That's what we agreed to.
That's what we agreed to.
The biggest problem is right now, we, we agreed at three oh five, but if you take our three oh five and divide it by our, uh, evaluation for the whole village, it comes out at point zero 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 nine two, and that's a two left in there, so if the valuation goes higher, then you get more money, that's a stickler, right, Eric?
Right, and when it goes down, which it has in the past, when they converted the land on Hoffman Road to a conservatory, we go down as well.
I think we need to remember, you asked us for almost thirty percent more than we had in the FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So, however we resolve this, we need, you need to be paid, there's no question about that. I think that threatening to pull people out of the fire station is a little dramatic. If we agreed at three hundred and five thousand, let's do it, we do it in four payments, but it is a flat fee.
Right?
Right, that's what we're not, not, I don't.
So, you are ever going to.
You're, you're gonna get your money, it's the, it's, it's the three hundred and five thousand that we all agreed to, given to you in four equal payments, and then we're done for this year, for this system.
I do not have the authority to make that.
Why not?
My board of directors has to approve it, just like you all have to approve it. What we came back with was the ad valorem rate, because that's, that's the standard that we have followed, nobody asked us to change that, it's gone back before.
We have been, we've been asking you to change that since I've been on this council. I have, I have heard that, because we don't go to our taxpayers and say, um, you know, we want, you know, we have to back into, this is our budget, this is our valuation, and this is what our tax rate is to meet our budget. We just don't say, oh, we need, we need twenty-nine cents to meet our budget, but I wanna charge forty, cause I want more money, I want more. It doesn't work that way for us. We need a bottom-line budget, then we back into, we pay, you are a line item on our budget. That's what you are, you're, you're three hundred and five thousand, and that's what you should be getting, is three hundred and five thousand. You should not be getting a piece of our tax rate.
Well, why don't you go back to your board, it's a three hundred and five thousand, four equal payments, and see if it's gonna fly or not? If it doesn't, we'll have to go for it.
I didn't expect to get into this detail, but I'm glad that, you know, this is the level that we need to be at.
It's still one-third of what we have.
It is still one-third, and that doesn't mean that it's going to be this rate, you know.
We certainly need to get a contract, and we. We certainly need to get a contract, and we certainly need to pay the fire department. I mean, there's no, there's no question about that.
We don't disagree about that. We've been, I've been losing sleep on this issue. But, we need to, we need to have a shift in this thought process that the fire department gets a piece of our ad valorem tax.
I think we should take them up on their offer with the county to sit down with all of us, because we're, we're, we're headed off the cliff here.
No, not really. I mean, we can, we can do this year. We've, we've already presented a contract.
But if your board doesn't agree to that, then it is on the table to sit down with the county.
Oh, then we need to sit down with the county.
Yeah, yeah. And the county actually recommended that to us. Nobody needs anybody to jump off a cliff, but we do need a contract, and we obviously need to pay you.
Well, you gotta pay that guy now.
I've sent a message. They, basically, my board chair just texted back, we are good at the three oh five flat.
They did?
They're, they're sitting, waiting to hear it.
Well, you've, you've got that contract that, well, we'll take a look at it again, and make sure that the verbiage is the way we want it. Because it was the one you sent.
They will, I will, they want the version that I sent, because it is a West End contractor service, not a Foxfire.
Well, then it needs to be...
But we will change that line where it says the three oh five, rather than the language that it has now.
Send it to me, and I'll compare it with the contract that I sent you.
I think the only thing that's changed was, you've changed, you've narrowed the scope of who on the, it has to be a councilperson coming to our board meetings, versus a, somebody from Foxfire. In the past, it was a little bit wider, because the councilperson may not be available.
Send me what you got, okay, and then I'll compare it to what I sent you.
So, no action needs to be taken, because it's already...
We already voted on that, yeah.
So...
That's already been voted on.
All right.
Okay. Well, I have public comments.
Oh, I just forgot to put that.
Okay, moving on. I lost my agenda, but moving on, uh, we now have, uh, thank you, public comments. So, that is comments. Was there anything on the agenda?
Just on the pool filling, just because, uh, we do have a lot of people that ask us. The fire department does not fill pools. Uh, we will loan out pools if they want, but the county does, the way they do it is they use a meter, and they have to get, you have to rent the meter, and then you pay a, get per gallon fee for that. So, that's how they control it, because we have a ton of people that ask us, will we fill up pools? So, if you're gonna go that route, that's how I would consider it, if you want to have a meter.
A meter on...
Oh, he started about hiding a meter.
Yeah, they actually go out and install it. You have to rent it, it's like three hundred and fifty dollars, and then you pay, they take a meter reading before, and a meter reading after, and they pay a bulk price for...
When you say "they"...
The county, the county water department. And the county water department sets it up. They take the reaving, and then they take it down, and you tell them, I think you have one week to use it, and I think it's three hundred and fifty dollars, but that would be something I would ask them. I know we deal with that. A lot of people asking about filling wells.
Thank you.
Derek?
Yeah.
Don't go.
You gotta go.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we got to go.
It's on the yellow.
Okay.
Under the right.
Hello, I'm Glenn Leary, seventy-three North Channel. With this new information about the West End Fire Department contract, are we gonna, residents here are anticipating a tax increase due to that thirty-two percent?
Not this year.
Not this year.
No, sorry, it's after this year.
Yeah, we can, we can't, it is what it is for this year. Um, we have to see what the budget numbers turn into for next year.
All right, well, I don't have time to say much. Thank you.
It's actually this year's budget, right?
Yes.
Oh, yes. It's twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Any other comments?
Not well.
Norma Carpenter, seventy-one Richmond Road. Appreciate you being good stewards of our passion. That was intense.
Intense.
Um, Rosie Juliana, two Grand Street Place. Um, so, um, I appreciate the fact that we're gonna be able to continue to keep our, um, supplies up at the storage room over in the Village Green. Should that change, or, you know, should something happen, I'm hoping that there's enough notification for us to be able to try and figure out exactly where we might be able to put that, so, um...
I don't see that happening for the near future.
Okay. Um, in addition, the water update, I kinda feel like there were certain things that we're missing that, you know, would be nice to be brought up. Um, I mentioned this before, that there are different things that occur. Um, the agenda doesn't always cover everything. You can't cover everything. But when it comes to water, because of some of the different things that have happened, it would be nice if we had some additional information on where we are, as far as the staff personnel is concerned. Are we pushing back on the timeline for it? Um, maybe there was some, uh, some movement to that. In addition, are we looking for another well? What might be the timeline for that? And I heard that there were gonna be some possible repairs to the well that's over there by the pickleball courts, and we don't know what's happening with that. So, this kind of goes back to what I was talking about, is having some additional transparency on some of these things, so people have an understanding of what's happening. I sort of feel as if, if something hasn't been resolved, if something hasn't been finalized, it should always be on there. You know, just, this is kind of where we are, something. This whole West End Fire Department discussion was pretty scary. And here again, if this situation wasn't something that it's...
Address it, that goes, please.
Um, just pointing to, Eric. If it was something that wasn't resolved, and it sounds as if it may be resolved, these are the type of things where information needs to be provided to the residents, so they have an understanding of what some of the options are. You know, there was talk about making a decision on all of this right now. Well, I, I, I feel that the residents need to understand, if there is gonna be a tax increase, what is that tax increase? Why is the tax being increased? What is the cost? So, a lot of that has to be laid out, so the residents do understand why there's a tax increase, not just, there will be, well, there will be, how much will it be? And, you know, people need to have an understanding of all of that. It's not just something that, here you go, there's gonna be a tax increase. So, I feel like there needs to be some discussion in regard to that. The mayor's letter, um, that you're gonna be signing, it would be nice if that was out on the website, so that people understood what was being said, and what we were kind of putting ourselves into, what we were joining, or what we're, you know, signing off on. So, these are things, again, transparency to the residents, so they have an understanding of what the village council is, is working on. So... And then, lastly, in regard to the fencing, I know that there's still been some discussion in regard to fencing, and I don't know if we're...
By regard to what?
Fencing.
Were we, what fences? What do you, we, were we talking about fencing?
No.
No.
Sorry, no.
It was in Lisa's report.
Yeah.
It was in Lisa's report.
It was in your report, but it wasn't of discussion that we were having regarding fences. Well, and I think, I just wanna say something. I, I don't think people realize that topics that we are discussing can be put on the webpage after our discussions. They don't necessarily go on the webpage before our discussions, because this is, these are items that we are discussing. So, I just wanna make that clear. Not everything is going to be put out there. I'm not done.
Okay, I'm just gonna come on some...
So, this is a discussion I'm having with, this is not something that, when we receive something, it's going to automatically be put on the website. Once we've discussed it, come to a, a decision, and so on and so forth, that's when we can, at that point, am I wrong?
Well, usually, during your discussions, during work sessions, and you're compiling, you might be doing your own research, and we need to go to discuss, but we don't put every individual piece out there.
Right. So, just so everybody understands, I mean, her letter, the letter, the mayor's letter, we were just presented with it tonight.
And, yeah, no, and that's great. And now, if it winds up being something that's available to everyone, so they're able to see it, that's great. People that weren't here have visibility to it.
Correct.
And that's part of, um, you know, what, some of these packets and things like that would be as well. Work sessions go through, and then there's information that's available, that people are able to take a look at.
Thank you. Not intended for back-and-forth conversation, so...
I'm sorry.
We're just taking public comments. Okay. Any other public comments?
Nope.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at six twelve. I watched that.